Good evening. Pike County Board of Commissioners, regular monthly meeting, Tuesday, November the 25th, 2025 at 6:30 PM is called to order. Please stand with me while we observe a silent invocation and remain standing while lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Entertaining a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Motion, Chair, to approve the agenda. Second.
Commissioner Guy made the motion to approve the agenda. Commissioner Pullen made the second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners, for the purposes of discussion, we have noticed everybody that the item 9D, the application for rezoning, has been withdrawn, so that is not going to be considered tonight.
Maker of the motion, the second, good with those changes? Commissioner? Yeah, okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Motion carries, no opposition. Entertaining a motion to approve the minutes for the November the 12th, 2025, the regular monthly meeting.
Yeah, motion to approve the minutes of the November 12th, regular monthly meeting. Second that motion.
Commissioner Pullen made the motion. Commissioner Guy made the second. Any discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Motion carries, no opposition. Item 6 under invited guests, Pike County Fire Department to recognize employees for their outstanding service and heroic actions in the line of duty.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to invite the chief up. Chief Wilkerson, if you'll come up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, Madam Clerk. What a wonderful time of year to witness what we're fixing to witness tonight. I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. All Pike, a happy Thanksgiving. On behalf of all of Pike County Fire, I would like to thank you all for allowing us to be here tonight to share some stories that definitely gives a new meaning for what Thanksgiving really means. Your continued support means so much to our department as we continue to strive to become the best that we can be. I know a few meetings ago, we was in here, we was discussing the miller's rate and, you know, taxes, it was kind of a real emotional night, and I know some statements, you know, were being made. One that sticks with me was a statement that was made about, someone said they may, they would not even maybe want a fire department, they may want to just, you know, take their chances. I can promise you tonight, you're going to meet some folks that don't feel that way. My family don't feel that way. I appreciate what y'all set out and asked us to reach for, you know, four and a half years ago when I come aboard, and we, our folks have worked hard, and I'm so proud of them, and it pays off. I'll say again, you know, I think our department is the most professional part, you know, department in the whole county. The experience, you're probably going to be looking at 75 to 80 years' experience of the awards that's going to be given out tonight. Even with the, working with AmeriPro, we're getting so much better working together, and so I'm so proud of them too. And I'm going to turn it over to our deputy chiefs now, Chief Pos and Chief Neath, and they're going to come up and present their awards and let you meet some incredible people. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening. Thank you for your time and your opportunity to address the board and the community. My name is Stephen Pos. I'm currently Training Chief for Pike County Fire Department, and over the past few years, we've witnessed significant increase in the demand for our services, reflecting the growth and needs of our community. Our fire, our fire department is equipped to respond to a diverse array of emergencies, which include but are not limited to residential and wildland fires, auto accidents where extrication of trapped individuals may be necessary, and hazardous situations such as those involving carbon monoxide exposures. We address an increasing number of medical emergencies ranging from basic first aid to critical life support interventions. The Pike County Fire Department comprises of both dedicated volunteer firefighters and professional career firefighters. We operate out of a single fire station, Station Number 7 in Zebulon, that staffs 24 hours a day. During this time, we have two part-time career firefighters on duty, as well as one additional firefighter who assists during peak call times to ensure prompt response to emergencies. A majority of our career firefighters are residents of Pike County, which fosters a strong sense of commitment to the local community. Many of them are not only career fire, career professionals, but also volunteer their time to serve in various capacities when they're in the department, myself, Chief Neath, Chief Wilkerson. This dual role enhances our ability to respond effectively and efficiently to emergencies, and we rely heavily on the unwavering dedication and enthusiasm of our volunteers. Their contributions are invaluable in enabling the department to fulfill its mission of safeguarding lives and property in our community. We have a total of seven other stations throughout the county that are volunteer-only, the only one paid. The first story I'm going to share with you tonight is amazing on how it went down. It's a profound honor to stand before you to acknowledge the exceptional effort of these dedicated professionals. So on September 25th, at precisely at 9:45, a critical call was received by the 911 Dispatch Center. Initially reported as a bee sting, the situation swiftly deteriorated into a serious medical emergency as the patient began to experience significant difficulty in breathing, basically going on an enflaxis. At that moment, the county faced a challenging situation. All the ambulances were already engaged in responding to other emergencies, leaving none available for immediate dispatch. Understanding the urgency, the dispatch team promptly made calls to neighboring counties in search of mutual aid, requesting an ambulance to respond as quickly as possible. As time went on, the gravity of the situation became clear. The first emergency responders arrived at 9:59 AM, only to find the patient unconscious, unresponsive, displaying signs of severe respiratory arrest due to allergic reaction. In a critical update, dispatch did inform the responders that another ambulance was on its way, but it would take approximately 20 minutes to reach the location. Recognizing the life-threatening nature of the patient's condition, firefighter paramedic Caleb Pritchett, operating in the Quick Response Vehicle, 7, or QRV, and firefighter Doug Want with firefighter Kevin Gillum took immediate action. They began assisting the patient's breathing using a bag valve mask with supplemental oxygen. This critical intervention involved careful coordination as they worked to deliver breaths and maintain his oxygen levels. The wait for the ALS unit felt excruciating, which each second stretching on as they kept working tirelessly to sustain the patient's life. AmeriPro Supervisor Robbie Vickery arrived and continued the efforts that were being made. At 10:31, Med 420, which is mutual aid for us, with EMT Sally Hammack and AEMT Kim Reagan arrived on scene, bringing with them advanced equipment and additional personnel who quickly began to assist the primary responders. Thanks to this remarkable teamwork and dedication displayed by the first responders, just two minutes later, at 10:33, the patient regained breathing on his own. This encouraging turnaround was a testament to the quick thinking, skill interventions, and brave individuals who respond in a time of crisis, ultimately making a sacrifice, the significant difference in the patient's outcome. At this time, I would like to ask William Curtis, the patient, to come up here and help us recognize the efforts and dedication of the crew that ultimately saved his life. First off, I would like to recognize Caleb Pritchett. And then from AmeriPro, we have Robbie Vickery. Sally Hammack. Kim Reagan. At this time, so give everybody a beat round of applause. Christmas is another holiday. Thanks, Doug. What a remarkable story that is. I just, I love that. Here's another amazing, remarkable story to me. The national survival rate for out-of-hospital cardiac arrest is currently documented at 10.4%, 10.4% out of the hospital. That's it. So if somebody goes down right now, you only have a 10.4% chance of living. It's critical to note that for every minute the heart is not beating, a person's chance of survival can diminish by 7 to 10%, showing the importance of immediate medical intervention. That's why it's so important to have the fire stations we have. On October 16th, at approximately 3:28 PM, the Pike County Fire Department received an urgent call concerning an individual who was found unresponsive and unconscious. Demonstrating exceptional preparedness and efficiency, the fire rescue crews arrived at the scene with just a few minutes of receiving the alarm. Firefighter Caraway, who was on duty with Brush 7, quickly assessed the condition of the patient. Recognizing the seriousness of the situation, he initiated CPR without delay. After assessing the patient further, he placed the automated exterior defibrillator, the AED, pads on the individual's chest. Evaluating the situation revealed that a shock was necessary. Firefighter Caraway ensured that the area was clear, then confidently delivered the first life-saving shock, following proper protocol to maximize the checks, the chances of reviving the patient. Shortly thereafter, Med 7 and Engine 7 arrived on scene, bringing additional personnel and resources. They immediately assist, continuing advanced life support protocols, which included administering medications and monitoring vitals. Thanks to their rapid and coordinated efforts, the patient was able to regain a pulse before being safely transported to the hospital. That's unheard of. He had a pulse before they even transported. Upon arrival at the hospital, the individual was admitted to the ICU, where he remained for seven days under comprehensive medical care. Thanks to the swift and skilled actions of the first responders and medical team, the patient made a remarkable full recovery. Several critical factors that contributed to this successful outcome was the early recognition of the individual in cardiac arrest, the prompt response of our emergency crews, and their efficient executive, execution of life-saving measures in a high-pressure environment. These actions highlight the importance of training and preparedness in emergency medical situations. At this time, I would like to ask Todd Thalers to come up here and help us recognize the efforts and dedication of our crew that ultimately saved his life. It's amazing to see you up there. It really is.
It is.
So we're going to start out with Matthew Caraway. Red Leonard. Life-saving machines right here. From AmeriPro, we have Jessica Williams. Frank Plack. Let's give one more round of applause. So a few days after the previously mentioned events, the Pike County Fire Department received a call for active labor at a residential address. Upon arrival, firefighter paramedic Pritchett found mother with baby lying on her chest. At that time, it's like, who? The baby's born, so we're good, right? The feeling of relief quickly went away when the mother advised that she was actually having twins. So there's that. Although the environment was not a hospital, the professionalism and expertise exhibited by the firefighters and medical personnel created a supportive atmosphere during this significant moment for the family. Since its establishment as a part-time paid department about four and a half, five years ago, Pike County Fire Rescue has accumulated a wealth of experiences with numerous stories reflecting their commitment to serving the community. These accounts extend beyond medical emergencies. They encompass a diverse array of incidents showcasing the team's versatility and readiness. For example, in a remarkable series of events, the department recently responded to a plane crash. We took actions to rescue a horse that became trapped in a hole, and we provided assistance to a patient who was pinned under the bucket of a bobcat. His legs were under the bucket, all within just one week. All that happened within a week. Each of these incidents required not only technical skills, but also quick thinking and teamwork under pressure. I would like to express my gratitude for the opportunity to publicly acknowledge and commend the hard work, dedication, and courage of our crews. Their unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being of our community is truly commendable. Thank you very much.
I just once again, thank you guys. You guys had the vision years ago. Y'all, y'all told us where we, y'all wanted us to be, and we worked hard to get there, and we'll continue working hard for you, so thank y'all for y'all's support.
Thank you, Chief. And I want to thank, they're getting a call now, it sounds like, we all are in our beds at night sleeping, and as the chief said earlier, we don't realize these guys are out on standby, just waiting for something to happen. I'd like to ask if the firefighters and paramedics, EMS, if you're one of those two, I want y'all to stand up, please. I don't want anybody else to applaud how much we appreciate these guys. Each, each budget year, the chief comes to the county manager and the commissioners wanting to take that next step to improve our fire department. And Chief, I appreciate you and your other, other chiefs and all the staff, so keep, keep coming to him.
Stay on him.
Keep, stay on him. There you go. Thank y'all. We want you guys to stay, but don't feel like you're obligated to stay the rest of this meeting, it can get boring sometimes. If y'all want to leave, leave. If not, please stay. Here you go, just a minute. See you, Kyle. Good to see you.
See you, Kyle. Bye, Jenna. Thank you, Doug.
See you, Hugh. Take care. Thank you. Appreciate y'all. Yeah. Thank you.
They saved my life.
Yeah. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Item number seven on our agenda, reports from the commissioners, departments, committees, and authorities, monthly reports submitted from county departments and county authorities, including a revenue expenditure statement for all departments and a summary check register, and entertaining a motion.
Motion for approval. Second.
Commissioner Guy made the motion to approve. Commissioner Pullen made the second. Any discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Motion carries, no opposition. Item B and C is the County Manager's report and his comments.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. Provided we use some information prior to the meeting, and I just want to kind of go over a couple of highlights. First and foremost, I need your approval. After the last meeting where you all had approved the employee appreciation Christmas luncheon, we were contacted and advised that a couple of our departments were not going to be able to participate, as some of y'all know, our taxes are due on December 20th, and this was scheduled for December 19th. In consideration of the possible conflicts, we discussed what options we'd have and contacted each of y'all, and I'm asking for you all to approve in lieu of the Christmas luncheon that you authorized me to give the employees the day off on December 26th, which is the day after Christmas and a Friday, in between the Christmas holiday and the weekend.
Yes, I don't have a problem with it, Mr. Chairman, so I would make a motion to make December 26th a holiday in lieu of the Christmas luncheon.
Second, Commissioner Pullen. Commissioner Pullen made the motion. Commissioner Guy made the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Motion carries, no opposition.
Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, provided you information about the impact fee advisory committee in the last meeting that took place on November 19th. As I advised, our consultant, Bill Ross, was present, and he fielded some questions, and there were a lot of discussions, but there was some ambiguity about the percentage that could be collected in connection with either the residential or non-residential. The advisory committee asked if I could do some research and provide an opinion, basically about the possibility of differentiating between the percentage collected for residential impact fees versus non-residential impact fees. And because they're an advisory committee, I wanted to make sure that I had your authorization in order to do the research and provide the opinion, so if you could authorize me to do that, I would certainly appreciate it, and I know the committee would as well.
Will that be in the form of a charge to the county, or is it just?
It's not an additional charge. It would be just authorizing me, in my capacity, be able to do the research. They asked me to do that, but I might, I take my instructions from the board.
Okay. Make a motion to approve.
Yeah, second.
Commissioner Dugan has made a motion for the county attorney to, for the investigation of the impact fees. Commissioner Pullen made the second. Any discussion?
Mr. Martin, just one question on that. How long do you think it's going to take to do that research, and do they have another meeting scheduled?
There is not another meeting scheduled at this point in time, and with the holidays, it would be after the holidays, in sometime into probably mid-December, be able to do the adequate research and provide the opinion.
All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, that just, I will highlight again what I brought up last time. I think that those meetings need to be on YouTube.
Okay. Any other discussion? I call for a vote. All in favor, show of hands. Motion carries, no opposition.
The next item I wanted to address is that I give you a report on McKinley Road. It's my understanding the top paving lever, level has been completed, however, that there is some additional work that needs to be done, and I received an update from our contractor, or actually through Chris Goodman, from the project manager, that they anticipate being fully completed with McKinley Road project by December 10th. However, I have received this week a request from citizens on McKinley Road asking for consideration related to speed humps or speed tables. I did contact our contractor, Mcleroy, and asked for some estimates, and I have not yet received that. As you recall, the estimates we received for Tanyard Road, $3,500 each for speed humps or $8,600 for speed tables. I anticipate the cost that we receive from Mcleroy will be about the same price range. What I understand is that even though the road construction signs have not yet been removed, now that the paving has been completed, there has been some excessive speeding occurring on McKinley Road, according to the citizen that I received the complaint from. So I just, I wanted you make aware that we've received that. I don't know if you want to consider that, talk about that tonight, or address it at another time, but I wanted to bring that issue up for your discussion.
Yes, I'll kick this off. I think everybody knows how I generally feel about speed bumps, speed tables, speed brakes, whatever on a county road. Particularly coming from a public safety background, we have ambulances and fire trucks, patrol cars, first responders, school buses. We all should know when we pave a road, speed's going to pick up. That's, that's just a given, unfortunately. But whatever, the board, that's my discussion.
That's Mr. Daniels' district.
Yes, I believe, is that, I think that's Timmy.
I can believe so.
Yes.
Could we?
Postpone it.
Maybe postpone it. Me personally, I wouldn't like, I mean, I understand the traffic picked up, but I would hate to see just these speed bumps being, you know, just put out on all of these roads and, you know, hopefully we can maybe get them managed by our county police department or insurance department, you know, down the road, or get that looked at. But, but like you said, it's, it's just terrible on ambulances and buses and...
And I will admit, I did, I've gone up and down those several times on 10-yard road, and they're not bad. They're, they're better than, those are speed humps or speed tables, Rob.
Those are speed humps. The speed tables are, again, the more expensive option, $8,600 each, based on the estimates that we received for Tanyard Road. And if you've ever been through Brooks, the connector, those are more along the lines of speed tables.
Yeah, I think the challenge we have here is the project's supposed to be wrapped up by the 10th, which is our next meeting, so we have to, I think, make a decision on a yes or no to tonight. It's just going to be too late if we wait.
Good point. Won't the district commissioner be president, but we don't have time for that. Good point. Any other discussion, or motion, or?
We know how many. We received the request yesterday, and I contacted the contractor, and he was going to look at the estimates, so we have not identified, Tanyard Road was a little bit different because they had some natural layout, the hills and so forth, where this is a straight shot, and I think that's the concern of the citizen, is it's become more like a Speedway since it's been paved, and, but I have not received a recommendation. We can certainly, again, keep the option open if I can, the contractor would probably still be in position to come back, because the top layer of paving has already been installed, so they're gonna have to go back anyway. I'll just remind you all, this should not be a terrible cost to the county, because we will be looking at using the approved ARPA funds, because the McKinley Road project was an ARPA project, so we would have funding available that's not gonna be out of the general fund. But I don't believe that it would be too late to defer it to the Wednesday meeting in December. The contractor's gonna go back anyway, but I can confirm that with Meckleroy if you'd like, but however you all wanna handle it, my concern is that we have not identified how many would be appropriate along that stretch, and I think that the, our engineer along with the contractor should be involved in that decision if you were inclined to consider that.
I would make a motion that we wait till the December 10th meeting, because we don't know how many, so that would make...
Yeah, I don't mind that, I just think we're setting up precedence if we start putting speed humps on every road we pave, so, I'm sorry, I just hit the button, because we've got three in the works, and, I mean, what's to stop us from starting to do this on every project if we do it on this one?
Right. I saw I got a motion on the floor to postpone this.
Second.
Second, okay, Commissioner Jenkins made the motion to postpone this decision to the December the 10th, is that right, Rob?
Yes.
December the 10th meeting, morning meeting. Commissioner Guy made the second, any other discussion? All in favor show of hands, motion carries in opposition.
And the last item that I wanted to cover is just so we could have the public information available, as you are aware, as I provided you the information, the transfer of the property, the 238 plus or minus off of the County Farm Road, it was transferred to the Development Authority of Pike County, and they have secured the financing through United Bank, and they have paid off the county's short-term note, and that is no longer an issue for the county, and that was completed this last Wednesday on the 19th. And that is my report, unless you have any specific questions.
Any other questions? County manager, no, okay. Next item on our agenda will be our commission reports, Commissioner Guy, District 2.
I have no report, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Pullen, District 3.
Yeah, I'm just gonna brag on Chris Goodman and his crew again, every time I ask them to do something, it feels like it's one or two days or same day, and they do a great job, so, thank y'all, I got a report the other day that you were scraping a road down south of, I'm blanking on the name now, but, no, just thanks for everything you guys do, I know y'all been a big help recently, and that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Jenkins, District 4.
I'd like to echo what Commissioner Pullen said, I agree. Also, I'd like to commend Jeremy, had an issue going on with one of the subdivisions, he was on top of it and has kept me informed, so I appreciate that, Jeremy. One more thing is, 48 Shooting Sports in the county, which is led by Coach Mayor Steve Frye, he's here, I'd like to thank the commissioners for continued use of the landfill, which is out on County Farm Road, they use for shooting range. They've been successful, you know, this season, they'll be going to state in Fana, I think.
Congratulations. Thank you all. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Chair has a couple things as well. Couple of us was invited and attended a, I just wanna thank the Farm Bureau, Ray Brumelow, the president in Brooklyn, also the county extension agent, had a great Farm City Week Breakfast last Friday, had a great turnout, was in the building down at the Chestnut Oaks, that's a great facility, I wanna thank them for inviting us and fellowship we shared there during that meeting. Also wanna thank and congratulate Jimmy Totten, he's our EMA Director, he's not here, but his mother's here, I think it's one of his deputy directors, so he was nominated by his peers in the state as EMA Director of the Year, for the whole state, and I think it's a pretty big deal, and I was told that it came out in the paper today, which I didn't, I just found this out yesterday, day before yesterday, so, I think it's a pretty big deal to be recognized, so Pike County recognized statewide for the EMA Director. So congratulate to him and thank he and his family and everything that y'all all do, thank you. He's the only one in the state that's a volunteer? One of the only two? Is there one for each county? Is that 159, or is there, how does that work? Okay, wow, so it makes us appreciate him even more, right? So, anyway, congratulations to him. One other thing I had is I was asked to read out our, some of these have been applications, we have multiple board vacancies, gonna list some now, if you people are listening, please sign up for, like I said, some of these have been signed up for, but I'm gonna read them all off to you. The Three Rivers Regional Commission Board has one appointment, Two Rivers RC&amp;D Council has two appointments, Georgia Airways Library Board has one appointment, the Pike County Agribusiness Authority has two appointments, in fact, they meet down at the Chestnut Oaks. McIntosh Trail Community Services Board has one opening, Development Authority of Pike County has three openings, Pike County Water and Sewerage Authority also has three openings, and the Pike County Texas Tax Assessors Board has two appointments, or two openings as well, and these need to be in, well, we'll do that the next meeting, right? So we do this in December to take effect in January, so please get out here and sign up and get involved. Only thing I have on, wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving in two days, so everybody be safe out there. Next item on our agenda, commission, nope, county attorney reports.
I have none tonight.
Okay, thank you, Rob. The new business, item eight, no, or nine, eight, discussion of draft list for updated paving projects.
Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, you were provided with a draft of a current and future list of Pike County paving projects. As you recall, you have been working off a previously approved list, and we're nearing completion of that previously approved list. McKinley Road, which is currently in process and nearly completed, is one of the four remaining projects, the other three, Wood Creek Road, Old Zebulon Road, and Blanton Mill Road, those were on the previous list, and also with the, previously approved by y'all with the designated funding, including the SPOLOST six funding for those three projects, Wood Creek, Old Zebulon, and Blanton Mill. We've transferred those property, or those projects onto the draft updated list and added, I believe it's 19, roads based on the need identified by Chris Goodman, our Director of Public Works, as well as the information solicited by the commissioners. I did receive an updated request by Commissioner Daniel to add Green Street and Fawcett Road to the list, and so I've made a note of that. The suggestion was, the information that we're providing, that you don't necessarily take any action on that tonight, we just wanted to present it to you, and the request was to perhaps schedule a workshop and have that workshop with Chris Goodman, I would also like to invite Mark Whitley, or the county engineer that's working on Wood Creek, Old Zebulon Road, and Blanton Mill, so he can give you an update, but also participate in the discussion. One of the issues that we have to deal with is determining whether we want to acquire a right-of-way when we're improving these roads, or work with the existing pavement, as you know that we worked with the existing roadbed for both Tanyard and McKinley Road. The McKinley Road had some complications with utility relocations, but we know that Wood Creek, Old Zebulon, and Blanton Mill may require a right-of-way acquisition, and it's a significant increase in cost, as you'll note from the different cost estimates that have been provided on the list. And so what I would like to do is just simply provide you the information, I provided you information in my report prior to the meeting about funding sources, as we will be moving forward in the next few years, we'll have a reduction in the amount of special funds that we can use toward our road projects, and so we're gonna have to be careful with our resources, and that might be something worthwhile discussing in more detail at a workshop, and if I can get your direction on how you wanna move forward with the draft current and future list of Pike County paving projects, and the reason why it's not just roads, there were a couple of projects that were identified, including the county parking lot, and if you recall, the seniors had asked for the senior center parking lot to be expanded as well as repaved, so those are on the list as well, but I'm looking for your direction.
I think it makes a lot of sense to have a workshop with the people you mentioned, Rob. It's a public workshop too, it's not something that we all get together in a private room and discuss, and then if anybody else wanted to come in and plead their case for a road to be put on a list, the public would be more than welcome to do that, but we could really then sit down and talk about these roads, funding sources, and what needs to be done with the crew. So I would make a motion that we have a workshop to discuss this item.
Second, Commissioner Pullen.
Commissioner Pullen made the motion to workshop for the future list of paving roads in Pike. Commissioner Jenkins made the second. Any discussion?
I would ask if you all would be okay scheduling that workshop after the first of the year, since we're coming up on the holidays and we only have one meeting in December, and I think it would make sense to identify based on your schedules, a date that would be workable after January 1st.
No, I agree, I think let's put together an agenda for that, and then sometime second, third week of January, is that, that works for me.
Second, you good with that too? James? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor show of hands, motion carries in opposition. Item B, approved and denied the proposed amendment to the existing moratorium, sorry, memorandum of agreement between the University of Georgia Research Foundation Incorporated, Carl Vincent Institute of Government in Pike County, Georgia.
Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, as you know, we encountered some delays in the project, the original agreement that was signed in January contemplated an end date in October, we're well beyond that end date, and we have received a request for a written agreement, basically an amendment to the original agreement to extend this project through the end of February, February 28th. You have a copy of that amendment in your package, and I'm asking for your approval on that amendment and authorizing the chairman to sign, since he did sign the original agreement.
Make a motion, Chair, to move forward on amendment and for the chairman to sign.
There gonna be additional costs on this, it looks like a salary study to me.
At this point in time, we've already paid for the compensation study, this is just to complete the study, and it's a no-cost extension on the, to take this through to get the information. All we're gonna be doing is receiving information from the University of Georgia that we can use in the future, but we're not obligated to do anything with, as far as compensation packages.
That being said that way, I'll second the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Pullen made the motion, Commissioner Guy made the motion, okay. Commissioner Jenkins made the second. Any discussion? All in favor show of hands, motion carries in opposition.
Mr. Chairman, before you move on, I provided information in the report that came directly from the email that we received from Sam Traeger with the University of Georgia. They have paused the survey portion of the project where they would like to survey neighboring counties and key cities. I provided you with the list of those neighboring counties and key cities that they would like to survey, that included Lamarck County, Spalding County, Butts County, Monroe County, Upson County, Meriwetherly County, and key cities including Griffin, Thomaston, Jackson, Barnesville, Forsyth, Greenville, and Zebulon. We also had received a list of benchmark positions, what they're doing is that other jurisdictions like these key cities and other counties, neighboring counties, they may not have the same job description or title that we have, and so they're having a generic reference to benchmark positions to receive the information, so we can review that and then tailor it to our job descriptions and positions. And so I'm just asking for you to approve their recommendations, so they can proceed with the survey of the neighboring counties and key cities with these benchmark positions that I provided to you in the pre-meeting report. If I could get a motion.
Same thing, if that's added, there's no cost?
Yes, sir, that's part of their project, is to survey the neighboring counties and key cities.
Make a motion, Chair, to approve.
I have motion on the floor, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, Commissioner Guy made the motion to approve, Commissioner Pullen made the second. Any discussion? All in favor show of hands, motion carries in opposition. There are many agendas, we have one public here in this evening, item C, to receive public input regarding text amendment to the multiple, to multiple articles of the Unified Development Code into adverse regulations and requirements for data centers. Jeremy, come up and address the board, then we'll open the floor. This won't be in favor or against, it's just to be a general, anybody has a comment, we'll give 20 minutes to come up and make a comment.
Yes, good evening, Chairman and Board members. The item that is before you is a text amendment, and it will be to multiple articles of the Unified Development Code, specifically Article II, Article 14, and Article 15. Pike County Board of Commissioners on September 10th of 2025 placed a moratorium on data centers to allow the planning staff and the Planning and Zoning Board the opportunity to review and provide recommendations regarding data centers. After several workshops between the Planning and Zoning Board and the Planning Department, we came up with some proposals looking at some surrounding jurisdictions, as data centers have become a hot commodity, it seems like, across the country, and since our ordinance didn't have any regulations for it, we went through our ordinance and plugged in some places. So in Article II, we created a definition, that definition for a data center would be incorporated into Section 202, data center would be a facility or a campus of facilities engaging in the storage, management, processing, hosting, transmission of data and related services which house computer systems, network equipment, servers, appliances, and other associated components, and structures customarily incidental or related to such operations. And then Article 14 and Article 15 is our industrial zoning districts, it's M1 and M2. Through our discussions with the Planning and Zoning Board, it was determined that the most appropriate place for the development of data centers would be in our industrial zoning districts, so the conditions that are listed here are identical for M1 as they are as M2, of what those conditions would be. So basically what we're doing is we're asking you to insert into the Article 14 and Article 15, under permitted uses, but under the permitted uses that require special use permits, so not only will there be supplemental standards that are in place, but every data center that wanted to come into the county would also have to apply for a special use permit and be addressed in front of the Planning Board as well as the Board of Commissioners for approval. Under those sections in the code, we're referencing some different things, having a minimum lot size of 10 acres for any data center or data center establishment, requiring 50-foot planted buffers or natural buffers along any property line that's adjacent to residential. buffers along any property line that's adjacent to residential. Also adding in that there would be 100-foot minimum setbacks from any property line and 500 feet from any habitable structure, including buffers of 150 feet for any streams, and all-state buffers for wetlands would be enforced. The applicant must provide letters from utility companies stating, at the special use permit stating that there are adequate services available from those utility providers, whether it be water or electricity. And any of those proposed improvements that would need to be made to those utility services would be at the expense of the applicant or the developer before we would be able to issue any certificate of occupancies for those buildings to ensure that the system upgrades were in place to support that type of development. Under E that is there, there is a typo that is in your packet. I have made the corrections in the actual ordinances itself, but it should be all data centers shall be serviced by public water systems. Private wells would be prohibited, so we would not allow any data center to be operated off of a well. It would be required to be on public water. And then we have a stipulation as far as that all cooling and ventilation systems shall be on a closed-loop system. We've placed in conditions that all data centers would be located only on US 41 or within a platted industrial park. So basically, the only place in Pike County that would support the industrial district of allowing for data centers would be along 41 or within platted industrial parks. We also added requirements that if they're on a corner lot or a double frontage lot on US 41, that their access would only come from 41 unless they were in a platted industrial park, and then they would be internal from that industrial park road. There's also a requirement as far as the sound decibels that they would be required to maintain and measure, that they're not exceeding sound decibels for properties that are related to residential districts, and that the county can request at any time for them to provide us with a study to determine that they're not exceeding those requirements and having the ability to revoke certificates of occupancy if they are in violation. Also requiring a decommissioning bond that would require them to return the property back to its pre-development conditions, and that bond would be determined by an independent third-party professional engineer that's licensed in the state of Georgia. Also setting some time restraints on hours of operations, or when you can't have hours of operations for generator facilities as they're doing testing and things like that. Requiring all exterior lighting to have automatic shut-offs, be fully shielded, so the lights directed to the site, not to additional sites. And then having any battery equipments, to have dedicated fire suppression systems, as well as prior to certificate of occupancy, that the developer or the applicant would be required to submit an emergency response plan to the Pike County Fire Department, the EMA Department, and the Sheriff's Office. That consists of a number of items that are required, so we would be able to have the information readily available on hand of what types of facilities are out there, so we would know, pre-planning of what would need to be done. That's the same things that are being added into Article 15, as far as the M2 zoning district. And staff recommended approval of this request. The Planning and Zoning Board heard this request at their November 13th meeting and recommended approval with all of these additional changes that were made. I will turn it back over to you, Chairman, to open the public hearing, so we can answer any questions y'all may have about this.
Thank you, Jeremy. At this time, open the public hearing. Anyone to come up and speak? Y'all, please sign in and state your name before you start talking.
Okay, I'm Steve Frye, and for this reason, I would be speaking, because I serve on the Upper Flint River Water Planting Council for the state. And this item with data centers has recently come up. I think because of what Jeremy said, you've already taken some of this into account, and some of the things that I'm about to bring up hopefully won't be a factor. But the reason the Upper Flint Water, or Regional Water Planting Council is concerned about data centers is the huge demand they do put on the system. One of those demands, you know, besides having the acreage and being able to withdraw water and then possibly put it back in to the aquifers, is what concerns us. Takes a lot of cooling to run one of these centers. And a lot of them now are trying to go into agricultural areas. You know, the challenges around agricultural business operations now, we're all familiar with. And when somebody dangles a carrot in the tune of a lot of money for someone to sell their farm and let it become a data center can be very attractive. If it is just going to continue, I believe you said M2 and some of the other zoning that it's going to be applicable to, that should not be as much of a problem, but just be cautioned that a lot of these places do want to come in and try to take over agricultural land. The reason that's problematic is because agricultural lands have water withdrawal permits. We're talking and working with the EPD to see if the existing water withdrawal permit that a farmer may have on his agricultural parcel would be transferable to a data center. Because the way agricultural systems use water is a lot different than the way data centers use water, and the return to the aquifers and the environment is much different. So that's the thing, just in keeping with your other precautionary things you put in there, just maybe keep that in mind, that it is a huge demand. Right now, we're looking at many nuclear, add a data center to supply it, and also looking at a molten salt method of cooling that will not put as much demand on the water withdrawal systems. But that's just sort of what we're looking at from the water side and working with the EPD on for those.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Becky Watts, Pike County Times, I just wanted to say thank you for moving on this quickly, for going ahead and putting down the moratorium, and for working on this and getting something in place. For y'all, the Planning Commission, Jeremy's office, everyone who had a hand in it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speak at the public hearing? If no, I will close the public hearing. Open the floor to the Commissioners. Question, or the County Manager?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just for your consideration, Jeremy's done an outstanding job providing the information and the conditions. What we're asking for tonight is a motion for a first reading. Because this is a text amendment, it's going to require two readings, which means if there are other additional changes that you determine may be necessary, you can still add them before the final approval. But tonight is simply asking for a motion for approval of the first reading.
Jeremy, how large are most data centers nowadays? Like, I know Spalding County's got three on there. I saw the 10 acres here. Is that typical, or?
Uh, it depends. In our research, when we were looking at different ones, there are multiple different sizes. There are some data centers that are relatively small, and then there are some that are massive. I know if we look at what's going around right now, I think there's three that's in Spalding that is coming up for contention at their meeting. I think their meeting is actually tonight. It's for three, and it's about a 4 million square foot campus, where they're wanting to have 4 million square foot additional data centers that are there. One of the reasons why we looked at doing the 10 acres was, one, not to have the smaller ones, to make sure we had adequate space for it. And that was the main reason why we looked at 41 only in the industrial districts, was, one, to prevent, you know, anything going into our agricultural areas by maintaining the agriculture. The one thing that I've heard since I've been here for almost five years is that we want to maintain the agricultural integrity of this county. So it's one of the reasons why we're wanting to put some of these regulations in place early and try to be proactive instead of reactive to it.
Thank you. Someone I spoke with a while back, Commissioner, that was, deals with these things, so they can be anywhere from 500 acres to, I mean, sorry, 5 acres to 800 or 900 acres, anywhere in between. The smallest one he was familiar with was only 5 acres, so.
I'd like to thank the Planning Committee and Jeremy for putting these standards forward, putting them in place, which I know all of this would have to come back before the board, before anything is done, but we definitely have to have something in place and look it over well before we make any decisions for our county.
I'd like to ask something, too, Jeremy. Done a lot of study on this data center. And there's a lot of negatives, but there are some positives. What's coming up recently is they generate so much electricity, they could in turn give that back to the area where they're at. Have y'all addressed that? Is that part of it?
It's not the, that was one of the reasons why we put, you know, the requirement that they would be required to get with the utility companies that would be providing the services. I know a lot of the data centers and the research that we've done, they're wanting to put their own solar farms in. They're wanting to have their own things, because they need to generate additional power that may not already be available on the network for that power provider. So they may be able to provide additional services to be able to sell back to those utility companies, but that was one of the main reasons why we wanted to have coordination in advance, so we would know exactly what would be entailed in doing that.
They generate a lot of power, but they also take a lot of power.
Absolutely. They can, for sure.
But have you studied how much electricity they can send back?
I have not, no. And I think it all depends on the different types. The one thing that we looked at in regulating this to 41 and then setting the acreage at 10 acres, you know, as a minimum acreage size, there's not a whole lot of land that is on 41 that would support any of these larger-scale data centers. I think the data centers that we just previously spoke about this going in Spalding is on a several hundred-acre tract that's going up there for that 4 million square feet. We don't have that size area of land even available along 41 to do that. So as far as the generation of that, I don't know that we necessarily have an area large enough that would generate much to be able to sell back to the utility providers in the area.
But to further address that issue, Commissioner Jenkins, the purpose of asking for the letter would be to identify what coordination they were having with the utilities. And so when they come back before the Board of Commissioners for a special use permit, that would be an item that could be addressed at that time as a condition. And similar to what we looked at with the solar farms, that would be something that can be identified and addressed at the time that they apply for the special use permit.
Any other discussion?
I don't have anything. So you just said a motion for first reading? Is that, okay?
Right.
Motion for first reading?
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
Commissioner Pullen made the motion for the first reading. This text amendment, Commissioner Guy made the second. Any discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Motion carries in opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. No public comment this evening, no executive session. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Guy made the motion to adjourn. Commissioner Pullen made the second. Any discussion? All in favor, show of hands. We are adjourned. Thank you. Gentlemen.